The composite, if like it becomes a bigger deal, like the price.
Yeah, it's been a few years since I priced it, so.
Certainly, have you seen that Tesla's gonna do a big announcement batteries? They're thinking they're gonna go from 300 to 500 mile range.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. Unfortunately, Councilmember Elsaf is back in the hospital, unable to join us this evening. So earlier today, he received the following note from Mr. Elsaf's wife, Tracy. She asked that it be read at the meeting tonight, so I'll read it now. It is dated today, June 16th. Dear Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, and Citizens, Twenty years ago, I was diagnosed with a degenerative liver disease that closes my liver bile ducts over time. The past several weeks have been dealing with complications from this disease as I am awaiting a liver transplant. Currently, I am in the ICU at KU Med Center in Kansas City due to an infection that developed as a result of the disease. I am under the best care and I'm slowly making progress. I will be placed on a liver transplant list as soon as the infection is gone. My wife is able to be with me and my children are being cared for by family. I'm honored to be your city councilman and plan on resuming my duties as soon as I am able. Sincerely, Jeff Elshoff. So keep Jeff and his family in prayers. City Clerk, I'll ask you to call a roll.
Dr. Joel Schroeder.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
Ms. Diane Nguyen.
Here.
And Mr. Jeff Alton was absent, but we have him here.
Thank you. Opening prayer, Pastor Green was not able to be here tonight, so we will unable to find a substitute. So Councilmember Schroeder, would you lead us in opening prayer?
Let's pray. We just thank you this wonderful evening. We just pray specifically for Councilman Elshoff. It's a challenging time, which pray he would be able to recover and be back with us, not only for the benefit he brings to the city, but of course, his family, loved ones, so we'd love to see him back in full health. We pray for this meeting, which pray you'd give us wisdom and make the correct choices. We pray this thing in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is to determine agenda additions. City manager would like to make a few changes to the agenda in adding two items and removing one. Is there a motion to make these changes considering a consideration of adding item one under final action and item C under executive session and removing item A under final actions at the request of Waste Connections?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to explain what those are for the public?
Certainly, can item I, let me go to item I. It's consideration of appointment of new council president for the remainder of 2020 to replace Mr. Elshoff, who is, and I'll talk about that at the time with motion. Item C addition is consideration of the Central Park Homeowners Association Transition Plan. And we will talk about that. And then item A that we're removing is the request from Waste Connections to consider a rate increase for their services, trash services.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the city manager additions and removals to the agenda.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say the same sign. Motion carries four to nothing. So consent agenda contains only the minutes from the June 2nd meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item seven, discussion approval. Skip something. This one, discussion approval appropriations ordinance. So this is typical appropriation ordinance for basic city operations. There is $40,000 paid on temp note interest and $100,000 for streets on Rock Spring 6. Of course, the street costs will be spread over special assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 20-10.
20 dash 11.
20 dash 11.
20 dash 11, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll say.
First and second, any discussion on appropriation ordinance 20 dash 11? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We have no city requested appearances. Citizen concerns. City Clerk, do we have any comments to be read?
We did not receive any, Mayor.
Thank you. And I see no one in attendance in the audience, so I'll assume there's no comments from the audience. Very good. So we'll go with reports then. Councilmember reports, let's start with Councilmember Welch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things I'd like to mention this week. I went by the brush site Saturday and it was so busy that most of 53rd Street was closed. I think we need to find some way to get those people off the street while they're waiting in line to dump. But it was good to see that many residents you taking advantage. I also went by the Westlake Road Improvement Project. They were right in the middle of it when I went and I can see it's gonna be nice when they're finished. They're probably finished now, but my complaint with them was that they had basically closed the entire street and that's probably what they should have done, but it was left so that you could drive through the potholes that they were making as they were removing the asphalt. So we need to also consider some way to improve that when we work on streets. And then a reminder, there's a citywide garage sale coming up, the weekend of the 26th, 7th, and 8th, or something like that. I'm not sure what the exact dates are. And what I, what I, my comment about that is I just want to remind everybody at these sales to take all their appropriate COVID-19 precautions. Wear your mask, use hand sanitizer after the sale. Remember that money is one of the dirtiest things you can touch. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no formal report.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Just want to mention, I've been driving all the gravel here in town and want to continue to look into that as I'm sure many other councilmembers are still considering the issue. And I just want to make it known that as many of you probably already are also interested in, if there any more input on that from citizens, it certainly I'd love to receive that as I'm sure the rest of us would as well. Also want to make a similar thing to Councilman Welch. You know, COVID is not gone. People are dying every day and I had a friend of mine who's a nurse telling me that a friend of his went to New York City. When he went to New York City, he came back and he is now in counseling for PTSD because it was such a horrific experience. He would go to one person and he wouldn't have the right materials and if the person wouldn't respond to the Heimlich remover maneuver, Heimlich, he walked past and they would die. And he knew they were dying and they basically didn't have all the materials they needed. It was so horrific. Now, when they went from New York to Chicago, Chicago was not near as bad. And so it sounds like New York might be the worst we've had. But I just want to encourage people that while we can't shut everything down forever, and I'm going to encourage that, we, I'm basically saying the same thing Councilman Welch in a more exciting way. We do need to do it. And the only way we can do it and continue to operate and have things go smoothly if we all buy into it. The government cannot make it happen. It has to be individual people deciding to do it on their own is the only way it's going to be effective. There's no way any body of government's going to do it. So I just want to encourage people to take all the precautions so we can keep our economy going the best we can as we try to have as little life lost as possible.
Thank you. And Councilman Welch, or Quinn, Welch has already passed.
Yes, I do have a short report. Several of us were, including the city administrator and the chief of police, were contacted by people who are living in the area and they're having animal problems, okay? Wild animal problems. At one point in time, and I think that's why I got the call, they remembered that we had someone here who took care of that. And I didn't remember all of the ramifications of back then, nor did the city administrator remember all of them, but we kind of pieced it together what had been happening. And he spoke to the county who does provide that kind of service for, for a price. And trying to make this so that it's not really gross, but what these people do is they pick up animals that are strays and they're put down. Not now. Most of these are not pets, okay? If they're identified as a pet with a collar or something like that, then that's a little different. But if you've ever tried to calm down a skunk, good luck. You know? And we have a little different animal issue out here than like Wichita's mostly dogs and cats. Well, we have dogs and cats too.
Excuse me, Ms. Quinn, could you move your microphone closer?
Sure. Is that better?
I think so. Think so. Thank you.
So anyway, the city administrator had talked with the county and they will provide the service, but there is a cost. So I said, well, how about I see if there are commercial ventures that will do this? And there are two that are listed in the phone book. And one of them, and obviously probably was out working, but did not answer the phone, nor had he called me back by the time I left for here. The other gentleman did answer the phone and I talked with him for quite a while. And you may have read about him. He is the person who also will move bees or wasps. If you have those who want to live right by your front door or that kind of thing. And there's no kill involved in that. He moves them. He's environmentally aware and knows that those are, you know, part of keeping plants and flowers and other animals and things going. So had an interesting conversation with him. He also charges for that, but he will come out here if he's called and, you know, and do what he does. And he also has worked or will work with some of the larger animals, because I brought that up, because Sunrise used to have the donkeys over there and they were always out. They weren't necessarily a big pain in the neck other than being out. But they also had some other animals, large animals at one point in time that were a little bit problematic. So these are approximations. The city administrator found that the county will charge $70 for a trip out here and do what they do. This gentleman will come out for $165, which is quite a little bit more, but you do have someone who is a little bit more environmentally invested, shall I say. And, you know, I don't know with the county, if they would even, if it were a dog or something like that, where they would even check to see if it had tags on or anything like that. He does all of that. And if it's, like I said, if it's bees, he will move them somewhere where it's safe and they can continue to do what they do. So since we had several calls, I just wanted to get that out there. And at some point in time, I'm assuming that the council may need to decide what do we want to do, which is continue as is, doing nothing? Or, you know, have everybody call the county and put that phone number on the website or something? Or, you know, use this gentleman and do that same kind of thing? Or a combination of all of them? You know? I think that, I think that the animal problem is not as bad as it once was, but I've seen it kind of start growing again. And, you know, I'm a firm believer of cats in the house, dogs in the yard. And, you know, and that's from somebody, I grew up on a farm, so you know what? I've handled a lot of animals that were. handled a lot of animals that were not behaving and all kinds of things. But that wasn't their fault necessarily. But I do think that we maybe need to think about this and decide which way you want to go, so that we have a little bit of a divided, not undivided, at least somewhat of a solution.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I would ask that we consider that for maybe a workshop discussion to develop a policy. I don't think we will make it our next workshop, but yes, one in the future. I think that's a great idea. So I appreciate your taking the time to investigate that. That's good information, so thank you.
If it's in, I'm most likely there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. So I have a few items to discuss. It's kind of getting to be my routine. On June 3, I participated in an audio conference with White House staff concerning COVID-19 and protests related to the death of George Floyd. The CDC continues to make updates to recommendations for protection from spread of the coronavirus, so please look up CDC information if you have questions regarding the latest recommendations, because they do seem to change. And the White House staff also talked about multiple resources available if needed to prevent or stop any violence stemming from protest. Of course, we have no desire to shut down protest. Protest is a form of free speech, which is our constitutional right, so we will honor constitutional, the Constitution in this regard. On Monday, June 8, I attended the Utility Advisory Committee meeting here at Bel Air City Hall. The water conservation plan was approved after the COVID-19 meetings that delayed the action since March. The issue of backflow preventers was tabled, as they want to hear from the Wichita subject expert on this matter. On June 9, I attended the WAMPO meeting virtually. The long-term 2021 through 2024 transportation improvement plan was approved. That's what we call the TIP. A lot of times you'll hear that term, and if you don't have something in the TIP, you don't get, you don't have any chance for funding. So that was approved for that period of years. Now, that's changeable. They'll review that, I think, now every year. They didn't used to do that, but I think they're reviewing it every year now, so. And they also approved an employee and operations manual. Today, the newly approved Woodlawn Construction Engineering Selection Committee met for the first time to review proposals for construction inspections on Woodlawn. We hope to have this process and make a recommendation for council approval sometime in July. On July 11, we will hold our second Coffee with the Mayor here at the city building. All are invited to attend that. And the first one we had had about seven to 10 participants. They kind of moved in and out a little bit, so I never kept accurate count of how many were there. So, but it was a good discussion, and I look forward to another good discussion on July 11. As most of you know by now, on June 3, there was a social media post that was threatening to Bel Air and surrounding communities. Sheriff Easter and Chief Atterbury did a great job combating forces that night. We had 10 police officers and 25 sheriff deputies in Bel Air that night, controlling the city to assure that there were no flare-ups of violence. The night remained peaceful, thanks to the work of these peace officers. It was a great example of good police work and agencies working together. I sent a note to, of appreciation to both Sheriff Easter and Chief Atterbury, and if you get a chance to thank them for their protection of citizens of Bel Air. A note on police work. We have some citizens express concerns on de-escalation training of our police officers, and additionally, a concern was raised about the vetting process of new officers. Chief Atterbury put together an excellent detailed explanation of both of these. I think he had some help from other staff as well, on how Bel Air has been and continues to be well-prepared on both issues for several years. Chief Atterbury trains his officers that they are ambassadors for Bel Air. When an officer understands their role as an ambassador rather than an enforcer, it changes the way they approach citizens on a variety of issues and situations. The way Chief Atterbury manages the Bel Air police force is very commendable and worthy of our recognition. As many of you know, Dr. Martin Luther King held a PhD in theology from Boston College. He was a pastor of a Baptist church. This past week, the Knights of Columbus sent out a following abbreviated quote from Dr. King concerning violence. This is abbreviated excerpt from Dr. King's Treatise on Strength to Love, page 55 to 51, I'm sorry, pages 50 to 51, written in 1963. So the quote is, "Time is a cluster with the wreckage of broken communities which have surrendered to hatred and violence. For the salvation of our nation and the salvation of mankind, we must follow another way. This does not mean we abandon our righteous efforts, but we shall not, in the process, relinquish our privilege and obligation to love. This is the only way to create beloved communities. I call on all citizens to heed these words of wisdom given to us by one of our national heroes." Excuse me a second. Some of us have heard about a report of a 14-year-old girl in Arkansas City who had symptoms of illness on June 5 and was tested for coronavirus. On June 10, her test came back positive. Unfortunately, during the testing timeline, this girl went to a public pool, I believe in Arkansas City, and participated in a sleepover with her friends. So she exposed many people to the virus. Without imposing a total lockdown, similar to what the state did in late March and all of April, there is no way anyone can mitigate against such disregard for the recommendations of social distancing and stay at home if you have symptoms, just like Councilmember Welch and Councilmember Schroeder spoke about earlier. Additionally, yesterday, Governor Kelly signaled out Cedar County for the latest increase in COVID-19 cases, when the county commission decided to make all phase-in plans recommendations not mandatory. It's unfortunate that the governor failed to recognize that Cedar County expanded testing on June 5. Whenever you expand testing, you will see an increase in confirmed cases. That's just statistic 101. It does not mean that Cedar County has a growing infection rate. I sent an email to Adrian Byrne, the director of Cedar County Health. She said the county is working on bifurcated data and will be able to state whether the growth in cases is simply due to increased testing or a growing infection rate later this week. I continue to implore, as others here have done, all citizens to please follow the guidelines for common good, for the common good. Stay home if you have symptoms of illness. Wear a mask when in public where practical. Maintain social distance of six feet from those who do not live in your household. Cover your cough and/or sneeze with a tissue or your elbow. Frequently wash your hands for 20 seconds with soap and water. If soap and water are not available, use hand sanitizer. These practices have proven to slow the spread of the coronavirus. Please follow them for the common good and the health of all of us. And lastly, we will celebrate the 244th anniversary of our nation's independence on July 4. In addition, this year is the 40th anniversary of Bel Air as being a city. I believe the city manager will expand upon the details of the celebration we are having outside the city hall on the evening of July 4. This includes professional fireworks display. I encourage any and all to attend the celebration, but please, please follow the recommendations for social distancing and sanitation. The last thing we want for our celebration is to be marred as being a hotspot for the coronavirus spread. I hope everyone has a great celebration of our nation's independence. At that, I will call on our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to update council that the AG issued their guidance, just for comments at this point. The guidance is related to how the AG handles CORA, Kansas Open Records Requests, and how they anticipate other cities or cities should handle open records requests. And we're very interested in their opinion, since they would be the ones to enforce any open record violations. We reviewed the guidance, and basically, it establishes presumptively reasonable rates, so some specific rates that will pretty much automatically be seen as presumptively reasonable for filling CORA requests. It also recommends the use of the least-cost category of staff to handle CORA requests, and sets forth best practices that, if followed, would tend to demonstrate, in their eyes, that a city is in compliance with CORA mandates. And finally, it outlines additional factors, new factors that the AG will consider. As the city staff has reviewed it, we see that, we in other cities also see that there may be a gap between what the AG sees as reasonable rates, when, I believe the AG has an entire department designated to handle open records requests, whereas cities are often handling it between two people. And though we can always start with the least costly staff person, sometimes certain requests, due to their technical angles, or maybe their subject matter expertise, like with law enforcement cases, or IT questions, or finance-related questions, quickly ramp up in costs. And for smaller cities with a limited staff, that could be an issue. So we are watching this, and I'd be happy to contact council this week about some recommended feedback, if that were the case, on how setting presumptive standards that may be lower, because of the realities of being a smaller city, might impact a city like us. So I'll be in touch with that. Just wanted to let the general public know that it's backflow season. We met during a workshop about this last year. The city engineer emphasized that, you know, the backflow prevention program protects the city from people getting to the system and possibly contaminating the water supply, whether that's inadvertently or on purpose. So we have this program. Council last year decided to retain the program and extend the amount of time that people would have to get their backflow meters tested. Last year, the enforcement was educational. This year, because of COVID, we were slowed down again. The tests were due on June 1, according to code. The city manager did approve giving more time, so the enforcement period would begin on July 1, so that way we could start working on getting overall compliance. We were at about 60% last year, with that being our first year of, you know, we had a full-time staff person, and we were able to actually enforce, with council's blessing. So, not enforce, but actually run the program very thoroughly. So we'll keep council updated on what we see that happens this year. Like I said, enforcement won't actually begin until July 1, so that's something you may want to keep in mind. And that's all that I have.
Great, thank you. And yes, please send some feedback information on the CORA, because that, I'm very interested in what they, what the Attorney General is recommending and what we might feedback, because, yeah, we can, we can get ourselves in a lot of trouble just to do an unfunded mandate there that doesn't make sense. Okay? So, I appreciate that. Thank you. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next regular city council meeting is July 7, and as a result, we'll have Independence Day before then. So I wanted to, as the mayor mentioned, to cover a few things that are happening. City Hall will be closed on that Friday, July 3, since the 4th is on a Saturday. A reminder that fireworks can be purchased, and people are seeing tents going up, I'm sure, around town, from the June 27 through July 4, but they can only be detonated on July 4. So we have some people that don't remember that, or haven't looked that up, and so, but that is the code, that you can purchase them, but you can't detonate them. The exciting thing that the mayor had mentioned is we're going to have a 4th of July celebration here at city hall. It will be on the 4th, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, or whenever the fireworks are over. We've got, we're basically having, parking will be around city hall, and then people can get out, and they can sit in the lawn and have a picnic, or set up their chairs and watch. It'll be right across from city hall is where the, it'll actually be a commercial display. We'll have food here. The Lions Club will be serving hot dogs, and pops, and water, and snow cones, and other treats for everybody to eat. So if you want to bring your food and have a picnic, you can do that, or you can come and buy some food here. And the fireworks should start around 9:30. If people are concerned, again, like everyone stated, we want people to spread out. If they're out of their cars, if they would prefer to stay in their cars, they can easily go over to the Northeast Magnet, Isley, and watch from there. If they're close enough, they may be able to watch from home. So, again, for those that want to stay in their vehicles, there'll be locations to do that. And I think that's all I wanted to cover related to the 4th of July celebration, so thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. I see they mowed across from city hall today with the farmer was out mowing, which is...
Yes, that, the fire, that was something that the fire department requested, that it be mowed beforehand, and so I talked to the fire, or the farmer, and he said he could do that, and it's done today.
Great. Very good. Moving on to ordinance resolutions and final actions, we deleted item A, so we'll go directly to item B. Consideration of adoption of the 2020 Water Conservation Plan for the City of Bel Air. KDHE requires any jurisdiction that treats and sells water to maintain water conservation plan adopted by the governing body. Staff works with Utility Advisory Committee to review and make any needed changes. The 2020 plan has been reviewed and is ready for approval. Any discussion concerning the 2020 Water Conservation Plan? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the 2020 Water Conservation Plan for the City of Bel Air and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any discussion on the Water Conservation Plan? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries, four to zero. Item C, consideration of confirming the mayor's reappointment of Art Tenbrink to the Utility Advisory Committee. The term will run for two years. The UAC consists of five members who are appointed by the council and serve a two-year term. Art has been a long-term member and serves as the council, as a chair. I asked if he would be willing to serve another term, and he said he would. Any discussion concerning Art Tenbrink?
Mr. Mayor, it's not about Art in particular, but I did notice that, and I can't remember now which one of these groups it is we're going to talk about, but their form to apply to be on the group at a different meeting time than what the group published was their meeting time?
Yes, that, the, the way I understand it, maybe city manager or city attorney can help elaborate on it. The form is not a mandatory form, it's an, it's an optional way of applying. Is that correct? Can somebody expand, can either of you expand on that?
Yes, so we have the form out there, just so that if anybody's interested, they can fill it out. And sometimes we have openings, and sometimes we don't, so. And some people will send us an email, so it's just a way, if someone calls and says, hey, you know, I'd like to serve, then we'd say, okay, fill out this form, tell us what you're interested in, and then we can follow up.
Right, that's fine, but I think the form should indicate the proper meeting time. If I filled out that form thinking I had Friday afternoons available, and then I found out the meetings are on Monday at noon...
Oh, I see. You're asking for an update of the form?
Yes.
Okay, I see. I didn't understand that question, but okay.
I'm sorry I wasn't clear enough.
We'll get there. Okay, all right, yeah, please update the form.
Just a minor technicality.
Very good, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
We still need a motion.
I move that we confirm the mayor's reappointment, reappointment of Art Tenbrink. I never have been able to say his name right, to the Utility Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
Second.
First and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Tenbrink is on the Utility Advisory for another two years. Consideration confirming mayor's reappointment of Bill Moss to the Utility Advisory Committee, the term will run for two years, expire in 2022. Bill has been a member since USC was created, and 15 years ago. Bill has been a, been a member since the UAC was created, and 15 years ago. Currently, he is the vice chair and can pull upon his history as a long-term resident. Bill said he would be willing to serve another two-year term.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Bill Moss to Utility Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Consideration of confirming the mayor's reappointment of Dan Broyles to the Utility Advisory Committee. The term will run for two years and expire in 2022. Dan has been a member of the UAC for approximately six years and serves as secretary for the committee. He would like to continue his service for another term.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schrader.
I'd like to motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dan Broyles to the Utility Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
I'll second.
First and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We do have an opening on the Utility Advisory Committee, as Jeff Watkins' term expires on July 1. Jeff has decided to discontinue participation on this committee, and we are looking to fill this opening. The members have informed, information on a candidate that they are vetting. If all goes well, we may have another appointment to make on July 7. So, we'll see how that goes. They're currently looking at, looking to disperse him over, so. Item F, consideration of confirming the mayor's reappointment of David Floyd to the Bel Air Planning Commission. The term will run for three years and expires 2023. The Planning Commission consists of seven members, five residing in the city, and two residing within three miles of Bel Air, but are not in another city. That's a pretty narrow focus where those folks have to come from. David is completing his first term and would like to serve another three years. David is an avid researcher. From what I have observed, he takes the time to understand each issue that comes before the Planning Commission. Any discussion concerning David Floyd?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of David Floyd to the Bel Air Planning Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Consideration of mayor's reappointment of Gary Northwall to the Bel Air Tree Board. The term will run for two years and expire in 2022. The Tree Board consists of seven members who are appointed by the council and serve a two-year term. Gary has been a longtime member and serves as the chairman. I've asked if he would be willing to serve another term, and he said he would.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Gary Northwall to the Bel Air Tree Board effective February 1, 2020, for a two-year term.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item H, consideration of temporary and permanent right-of-way and easement acquisitions for the Wood Lawn Expansion Project. So, as the Wood Lawn Expansion Project is being designed, MKEC has found three locations where additional right-of-way is needed, and several locations where a temporary construction easement will be required. Temporary construction easements allow contractors to utilize personal property while construction takes place. They also allow for reimbursement of landowner for the use of the property, and then return the property to their satisfaction. Alan Skeens has been hired to obtain all the needed acquisitions. This action gives the city manager the authority to assign related documents and costs with the individual landowners. Both city engineer and city attorney will assist in this process. Any discussion concerning this issue of temporary and permanent right-of-way? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager working with land acquisition contractor Alan Skeens, city engineer, city attorney, and individual homeowners to negotiate and authorize reasonable payments on the city's behalf. Such limits shall be based on the expertise of the acquisition contractor, specific circumstances of each parcel, KDOC guidelines, and overall needs of the project.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Consideration of appointing a new council president, item I, for the remainder of 2020. As council member Elshoff shared in his written statement that I read at the beginning of this meeting, he is experiencing some difficult health issues and will miss some future council member meetings. Understanding the importance of council president and need to be available, should I be unable to attend a meeting, he has requested we select a replacement council president. So, with this one, we will need someone who will step up to take that position, and then for the council to approve that person.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Am I understanding that you said that this is something council member Elshoff has requested that we do?
I understand the city manager has talked with Mr. Elshoff about this.
Okay.
Yes. I didn't have that discussion with him. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Schrader.
Considering this, I think the person who has the most experience of those, continuing experience of those of us on the council is Councilman Smith. And so, therefore, I would think it makes the most sense to have the person who has the most continuing recent experience to fill this position, though I would certainly be open to other reasoning on why we should go with someone else, but that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I would agree with those sentiments. I will, just for everybody's education, council member Smith was its council president. Was it this last term, or was it the term before?
It was prior to council member Elshoff.
Okay, it was just this last term, okay. So, he was just that, this last year, but that, I don't have any issue with it. I just want everybody to know that, that was the case, okay?
Was it farther ago than that, wasn't it, 2018 or 17? Because I thought Elshoff was all of 2019.
Oh, you were the, 18, and then, and Jeff Hawes was 19.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
I also, I also support Mr. Smith, if he'd be willing to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I would certainly be willing to do it, if that's what the council desires.
Okay. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I thought we had one.
No, we don't.
Did you make a motion?
I, I just started off the discussion with suggesting Mr. Smith, but I can go ahead and make the motion if that's what we're looking for. I'll make a motion to appoint Councilman Justin Smith to replace Jeff Elshoff as council president for the remainder of 2020.
First and two seconds?
Sounds like you're in.
Any discussion, additional discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I certainly hope that this is, Jeff Elshoff has a speedy recovery, and I'm disappointed that we have to, have to do this, but I do wish him a speedy recovery.
Yes, I think we all do, thank you for those sentiments. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Councilmember Smith, congratulations. Vote carries four to zero. Executive session, so we need, I would like to ask for executive session for 30 minutes for item A, and so, do we have a motion for that?
I can make it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of consultation with attorney to discuss legal assessment of a certain matter pursuant to the KSA 75-4319 exception to four Attorney-client privilege. Invite the city manager, financial director, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:15 PM.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are in executive session for 30 minutes.
Two-minute executive session and no binding action was taken. The next item on the agenda is we'd like an executive session for 15 minutes to consider a separate issue, so we have a motion for executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move you into executive session for this over and discuss the subject of consultation with attorney about agreement negotiations presented to the KSA 75-4319. Exception for attorney to find privilege invite the city manager and the city attorney. Meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes and open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:31 a.m.
Paul Sir.
The first and the second, any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We are back in executive session for a separate issue. Executive session, no binding action was taken, but there is a desire to go back into executive session, so do I have a motion to...
So moved.
I think we have to give a time limit on executive sessions.
Oh, sure. I move that we return to executive session for 10 minutes, is what we asked for.
Okay.
And so the, um, I can't see the clock.
Is that adequate?
Twenty, twenty minutes till nine.
Okay.
Return it.
Thank you.
Eight forty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
First and second.
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify that executive session is, is an extension of the first executive session?
Or the second one?
Or the second executive session?
She's asking you to clarify that it's an extension of the second executive session.
Okay. Gosh, I need to go back and start over almost, don't I? Yes, this executive session will, will be an extension of the one that we just finished.
Very good, thank you.
No, or a second.
Second, so first, okay, the motion to extend the executive session for 10 minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who follow, same sign. We're back in executive session for 10 minutes.
Okay, so we're back on? It is? Oh, okay. All right. We're back in regular session. We held an executive session. No binding actions were taken. And now we are returned to regular meetings session. So the next item on the agenda is item 12C, consideration of Central Park Home and Association Transition Plan. Since the city is no longer a developer of Central Park and owns no lots, staff has worked with the HOA on transition plan for maintenance of common areas. This plan identified responsibilities of the city and the HOA from this day forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schroder.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Central Park HOA Transition Plan as amended by removing item 2A and authorize the mayor to sign.
I will second.
First and second.
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify that executive session is an extension of the first executive session?
Or the second one?
Or the second executive session?
She's asking you to clarify that it's an extension of the second executive session.
Okay. Gosh, I need to go back and start over almost, don't I? Yes, this executive session will be an extension of the one that we just finished.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll read second.
Second. So, first, okay, the motion to extend the executive session for 10 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. We are back in executive session for 10 minutes.